Welcome, everybody, to the April 16th, 2014 Town of Scarborough Council Meeting. Seven o'clock, a little after. Will everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Holbrook.
Here.
Counselor Donovan.
Here.
Counselor Katerina.
Here.
Counselor St. Clair.
Here.
Counselor Blaze.
Here.
Counselor Benedict.
Here.
Chairman Sullivan.
Here. Okay, item four, which is general public comments. You have three minutes. Name and address of where you live. Have to bear with me in my cold. We have five, um, five public hearings tonight. And I'd like to try, if everybody, everybody's gonna be able to speak at each, uh, of the, uh, orders. So try to, you know, if you're here to talk about the school, um, budget, then I would ask that you, you know, would speak during that, as a public hearing. If you're here to talk about the animal control ordinance or horses on the beach, I wish you'd hold your comments till that time. So anyone else that wanted to talk about any other issues in town would talk now during the general public comments. Let me start. Three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Buddy Hanson. I live here in Scarborough and Condam at 22 Stony Creek Drive. I am also the chairman of the Senior Advisory Board, and I wanted to announce to you all that on May 7th, the Senior Program Advisory Board have reserved a space for the senior expo at the Max Menon Colby Church. And I wanted everyone here to know that that is going to happen. We have a sponsor named Fred Emerson, who has sponsored the cost of us being there on the 7th of May, which is a Wednesday. Um, as you know, hoping you didn't know, is that Hallie Hodge, our town coordinator, is helping us make arrangements for this event. It starts at nine in the morning on, at, on May 7th, at Max Menon Colby Church, nine to four. And I hope that you all can come. It don't have to be a senior to come. We want everybody to come. There'll be businesses people there and all kinds of lovely people to talk to. I'm hoping that maybe, uh, our listening audience out in TV land will also get this invitation. Please come. We all would enjoy it. I'll repeat again one more time. It's on, uh, May 7th, which is a Wednesday, nine to four, at the Max Menon Colby Church. Uh, and I hope that, uh, I thought maybe Fred Emerson would be here tonight, but maybe he decided to stay home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Robert Rovner for King Street Scarborough. Um, I'm here to really talk about the budget and probably gonna overlap a little bit on this school. I'll try to make that very, very, very brief. But I'm going back to the April 11th edition of Leader, um, written by Michael Kelly, where he talks about a, uh, an increase that's gonna affect all of us in town. Three hundred dollars a, a home. I don't quite get it. Um, there was an article previous week where the town manager was quoted as saying we needed thirteen new jobs, positions in town, various positions. There was a new budget of requiring eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars. I don't get it. You don't have the money. We don't have the money. I don't understand why the word moratorium on spending has never been issued or heard by anybody in the audience in all the time I've been attending these mediums, meetings. There was a comment by one counselor about flatlining this year, and yet we're moving on with the process. School comes in, thirty-eight million last year, after, after three votes, wants four million more. We don't have it. What's wrong with skipping a year? I read articles in the paper where kids, people have kids in school have to share their books. I don't get it. Thirty-eight million dollars to thirty-six hundred kids? I'm sorry. It doesn't make any sense to me. The other thing that I don't quite understand is that in all these articles that are being written, I never hear a comment or a suggestion by any counselor about where we can cut an item from the budget. We never hear about an item. And I suggested to the town manager a year ago, let's put in some, some meters in town. I've never heard a suggestion of raising revenue without raising taxes. I would like to see each counselor submit two lists to the town clerk. One list going through the budget, each, each council making six recommendations on what could be cut, and the other list, six ways that they can increase revenue in this town without increasing taxes. I'd like that on the clerk's desk by the next meeting of May 7th. And I'd like them posted outside so that when people come into the May 7th meeting, they can read them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Anyone else?
My name is Michael Turek. I live in 11 Bayberry Lane in Scarborough. I happen to agree with that gentleman there. I was under the impression that this council wanted a budget that would not increase taxes. And yet, I'm also under the impression that the council sends out to the different departments and says, bring us your budget. Well, if those departments know that you do not want an increase in taxes, why did you even accept the budget they proposed to you? Why didn't you just stop the process and say, no, you don't understand? Uh, Mr. Blaze and I have been exchanging emails about moving the process along. Well, part of the process is if they don't do what you say, stop it and send it back to them. You tell me you want no new, uh, taxes, but yet you readily accepted a budget and moved it through the process instead of standing up and saying, no, I'm pushing back. I don't get it. Second thing is, I have to tell you, I can't afford another tax increase. In the timeframe that this budget and my taxes have gone up by thirty percent. I'm retired. I'm on social security. My pay raises have been four point one percent cumulative, not thirty percent. It's time the council looks at what you really, really need and not what somebody wants. This is too far out of line. It wasn't long ago that one town here in Maine recalled their counselor. And if you pass this budget, I think it's time you all went too. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. You go right up to the mic, sir.
Uh, Seth Furnell, 45 Maple Avenue. Uh, I don't emphasize on the budget too much, but just one thing I really was hoping, and I don't know where it is now, but just, uh, push for natural gas, a little wider spread in Scar, a little wider spread in Scarborough, uh, to save, uh, I know there's some, there's this, I think, rundown 114. Just hoping that, you know, somehow in negotiations with the Unitil or whoever's, uh, summit, I'm not sure who's in the area here of Scarborough, because we don't have it in my area. Uh, pretty dense area, Maple Avenue. Uh, that would save a lot of people a lot of money, a lot cleaner. I do not work for natural gas or anything, but I know it would be half the price of, uh, of, of heating. Um, just wondering if somehow if we could just speak more with Unitil or the associated parties and just push for expansion in the Scarborough area to save, uh, to save money. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Um, my name is Dick Springer. I live at, uh, in apartment J 313 of Piper Shores. Uh, I don't like to pay taxes any more than anybody else, but Scarborough has the lowest mill rate in Cumberland County. And, uh, at a certain point, when you cut, you're not cutting fat, but you're cutting bone. And I suspect that we're at that point now. Uh, you can always increase class size in the school. You always pay teachers less and have fewer good teachers apply and so on. Is that really what the residents of Scarborough want in order to, uh, keep taxes, make taxes even lower than they are compared with everybody else? That's my question. I'm sure it's not a popular point of view.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Sam Summers, 267 Holmes Road. Um, on the topic of taxes, it's, uh, the forefront of all of our minds, I'm sure. And obviously, the issue that we have with the plover situation adds on to the burden that people will be faced with should certain resolutions go through unchecked. One thing we want to not have added on to our tax bill next year because we're protecting a handful of plovers on our beaches is the multiple dog parks that we're going to have to build to accommodate the thousands of dogs in this town and give them a place to run. So I am very hopeful that the compromises that have been placed in front of the council with regard to changing the proposed ordinances allow for, uh, dog owners in this town to have some access to those beaches so we can avoid spending upwards of fifty thousand dollars per dog park to be outside with our dogs when we have that area for free currently. Uh, we also don't need things in our budget like plover coordinators and that kind of thing adding on to our additional tax burden. So, uh, I'm hopeful that we can resolve that, get that out of the way, so we can focus on the more important topics at hand like this tax burden that is faced, uh, that we're all faced with. Because honestly, that's more important in, in the end of the day. So please get through the plover thing sensibly, don't add on to our tax burden doing so, and move on to more important business at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? General public comments, anything?
Arthur Rossno, Magnolia Place. Uh, generally, I don't speak out in public about things like this, but my tax bill went up four hundred dollars last year. It's looking like it's going up another seven, three hundred dollars this year. That seven hundred dollars in two years is outrageously ridiculous. Uh, to, to the school budget to come back another four million dollars is, you know, I'm sorry, but, you know, you got what you wanted last year. Uh, we just can't afford. I'm retired. Uh, you know, there's a lot of senior citizens in this town, and you're driving us out of town here if you're not killing us off with these tax increases every year. It's getting out of hand. We may have the lowest mill rate, but you're kinda compete with Portland or Cape Elizabeth or these other places. It's not what you're here for. You're here to run Scarborough and not compete with the mill rates and whatever and whatever, and Cape Elizabeth and Saco and O'Leary and so forth. You gotta consider the senior citizens you have in this town. There are lots of senior citizens in this town, not just kids in school or people with dogs. If I had a dog, I'd keep the dog in my yard, as far as that goes. And I wouldn't spend thousands of dollars to keep somebody else's dog on the beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jolene Connor from 121 Ash Swamp Road. I have a little issue with the four hundred thousand dollars worth of computers that you're planning on buying for the high school kids. I mean, really, how many of the kids in this town of Scarborough have, don't have computers? Please. I think that they can use their parents, they can use the libraries. This is ridiculous. The school budget is just running us terribly in debt. We can't afford it. You really need to take a look at this. As the other person had said, you got what you wanted last year. Let's take another look and see where you can cut and, and live within your budget. Many times, you use the excuse that you're gonna get matching money from the federal government. Well, I'm sorry, when they have shutdowns in the federal government, you can't guarantee you're gonna get that money from the federal government. So start living within your means and stop taking it off the backs of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If you'd like to speak, come right up to the mic. You don't have to put your hand up. If anybody else would like to speak, you can start a line right at the podium so we can move this along a little quicker.
Hi, I'm Wally Fengler. I live on Holmes Road. I've been in this town since nineteen sixty-two. And I just did some figuring when I saw what the budget was gonna be. And in the last four years, my taxes have gone up eighteen percent. I retired in, when I was sixty-six, and two years later, I had to go back to work. I'm now seventy-three, and I'm still working, trying to make ends meet. My, uh, annuity, my annual, uh, salary has gone up four percent in those four years. So it's one percent a year. So when I take what I've, my increase and subtract it from what the town has increased my taxes, I have four hundred and forty dollars for those four years. It's a hundred and ten dollars a year to make, do with everything else that's gone up. So I strongly encourage you to figure out ways to keep that budget in ch, in line and in check and not overspend. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Next order. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, is there any adjustments? Oh, wait a minute. Minutes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Minutes of the last meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Any errors or omissions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Items to be signed, treasurer wants. I'll sign those as the meeting goes on.
Order number fourteen thirty-four is a seven p.m. public hearing and scheduled a second reading on the proposed municipal school budget for fiscal year 2015.
Okay, we have a presentation first, um, and then we'll open it up to the public hearing.
I was having trouble with this TV monitor. Is that on now? Very good. So I was asked just to provide a quick little presentation as a prelude to the, uh, public hearing that will follow. Uh, this presentation tonight is largely based on a presentation I made about three weeks ago to the council when I proposed the budget, though it has been updated based on some of the, the work that's been done with, uh, the various committees. The town council has a committee that has ongoing work on the budget, as does the school board. And so this presentation tonight does pick up some of those changes. Uh, there certainly are more to come. Uh, again, I can't stress enough how much this process is still ongoing and, uh, and evolving. Nonetheless, I wanted to give you a snapshot of where we, where we sit this evening, uh, and perhaps you wish to comment on that after I'm done. So first, let's start off with the guidance. Uh, it's been suggested here from the podium, the council, um, did set a budget goal this year, and this is the, the basic strategies associated with meeting that goal. Uh, those being conservative assumptions and kind of plan for the worst mentality. Look at a comprehensive review of all fees and fines, flat spending, and, uh, the result being a stable tax rate. Advocate for Scarborough with the legislature and a focus on capital budgeting. So those, uh, that goal was established sometime mid or late January, certainly before myself and my department heads were finalizing our budgets. Uh, and that was certainly, we're mindful of that through the process. Quickly, the process began with the presentation. The review process, as I mentioned, is ongoing. Uh, the town finance committee has been meeting the last three Tuesday mornings for about two, two and a half hours, sometimes three, uh, working diligently through the budget. Um, our counterparts on the school side have a similar process that's ongoing. I believe they have a meeting coming up on, uh, April twenty-eighth and possibly on, um, April thirtieth. Excuse me, May first. May first. Um, so the final, finance committee meeting will be this coming Tuesday, April twenty-second, and I believe their expectation is to kind of wrap up their recommendations. And just so people further understand the process, the, the finance committee of the town council typically, and I expect this year will be no different, will advance a number of recommendations to the full council. And typically, the council will consider those as a first matter of business, if you will, uh, when the budget comes back up in final, a second and final reading. So to dig into some of the detail now, this, these graphs just show kind of the distribution between the three major categories, that being town, school, and county. On the net basis, excuse me, let's start on the gross. Um, very quickly, this pie chart shows that fifty-five percent of the gross budget is education-related, forty-two is municipal, and three percent is county. And then when you shift to the net budget, and the difference here, obviously, is the town has the ability to raise non-property tax revenues of various sorts, whereas the school is very limited in that capacity. So not surprisingly, when you look at the share of the net budget, education rises to sixty-five percent. Uh, municipality drops to thirty-one percent, and the county actually goes up to four percent. It just gives you a sense of where the tax dollar goes. Looking at the total budget, this is just gross expenditures on the municipal side. Uh, we're at this point at four point nine percent increase in spending. On the education side, it's, uh, right now, it's seven, excuse me, nine point seven. And that's a result of work that the finance committee and the school administration, um, has, 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 uh, those are the results of that work, I should say. That number was, uh, ten point six eight upon my presentation of the budget, so there has been improvement, and again, I expect more to come. And then the county increase is seven point four percent. All told, it calls for a seven point seven percent increase in gross expenditures. Quickly, uh, on the town side, I provide still fairly high level, but a little more detail as to where, you know, what's driving those numbers. So you'll see at the bottom, it shows the total increase of four point nine percent, uh, just over one point three million dollars in additional spending. And you can see for yourself, uh, across which categories those costs are being, uh, are born. And there's certainly a, a lot of detail associated with each of those categories. Incidentally, all the town finance committee meetings are televised and certainly open to the public. Uh, that's a great opportunity. If people wanna know more about a particular department, that's where the detailed conversation occurs. Uh, beyond that, myself and my staff are certainly willing to provide further detail if people wanna know. Some of the drivers on the expenditure side for the town, I've just listed a handful here, but they do make up almost the entirety of that one point three million. Um, there are a, a total of twelve different positions proposed in my budget. I, I expect that those will continue to be scrutinized, and I honestly don't expect it all survive. Nonetheless, I thought it was important for the town council to have the opportunity to hear from my staff and myself, uh, to understand the needs and to make, uh, an informed decision as to whether we can and we should go forward with some or all of these positions. Uh, again, I expect there'll be some changes before this is all said and done. Uh, we've also done a pay plan reclassification, and there's certainly contractual obligations that we have. We've contracted services, health insurance, and debt services going up. Again, those five categories make up almost the entirety of the town increase. Shifting to the school side, uh, these were the school budget objectives. And those are to develop a credible student center budget that does four things. Provides a realistic, professional assessment of the, of the, of the level of student need in the district, maintains a continuous improvement focus, provides resources needed to achieve the second eighteen-month improvement plan, and builds upon the investments of prior fiscal years. On the school side, a little more detail here. This shows, again, looking at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the nine point seven percent increase, uh, that's the total percent increase for expenditures. And the school chose to break it up into four basic categories, those being basic expenditures. And I believe that's all kind of salaries and benefits. That's really the majority. As you see, uh, the vast majority of the school budget is wrapped up in that first category. And something else called investments and restrictions, budget adjustments, and debt service. And certainly, the superintendent is here tonight, as is his leadership team. Um, there is a lot more detail, of course, that, uh, is associated with each of these categories. But for purposes of, uh, for tonight, we wanted to be able to give you a little detail but not overwhelm you at the same time. The expenditure drivers on the school side, uh, just this shortlist, uh, is about one point two million of that three point eight million dollar increase. There are new, like I said, I believe, first, first-time expenses related to charter school tuition. There's outside services and tuition increases, utility and energy, uh, cost increases. There's a further shift of some of the retirement expenses to the, to the local level, health insurance, and debt service. And debt service is by far and away the single largest piece, at least on this column, uh, and almost entirely associated with the new Wentworth School, uh, which was approved by the voters. Quite overwhelming, I'd add. Shifting to the revenue side, uh, this pie chart, chart just shows you the distribution of town revenues. Not surprisingly, seventy percent of which, um, come through property taxes. There are other smaller categories. Um, one of them, I, I should note, and we'll go into some detail in a moment, is the state GPA. That's the State Support for Education. A trend that we've been struggling with for four or five years now is that number continually dropping year to year, and that's just exacerbated some of our budget challenges. Uh, the good news and the difference this year is that number's actually gone up slightly. Um, I won't stand here and, and suggest that that's gonna continue 'cause it does seem to be a real volatile number, but the good news is this year, we're actually getting more. So just simply, uh, between the town and the school, the town shows about seven point four percent increase in non-property tax revenues, and the school is showing just over a million dollars, which represents about a twenty percent increase. Uh, again, that's a, that's a, the reversal of a trend that we have not seen for five years now. And combined, we're looking at about one point eight million dollars of new non-property tax revenue, or about eleven point six percent. Some of the detail of that, um, the increases on the school side- Some of the detail of that, the increases on the school side, I mentioned earlier, there is more general purpose aid from the state coming to the school district, just over $600,000 in additional monies. There's also a proposal to use $300,000 more in fund balance, for a total of $500,000 to assist in the efforts for next year, and revenues from all sorts of other smaller sources totaling about $112,000. And on the town side, really a reflection, I believe, of the economy, we're actually projecting the increase in excise revenue, tax revenue. There's additional reimbursements, some from the school, and also where this budget contemplates contracted services with the town of Old Orchard Beach in providing dispatch services, and there's a revenue that comes back to us associated with that contract. There's a number of proposed changes for permits and fees in the planning department, public works reimbursements, this account, public works provides all of the vehicle maintenance services for the entire town fleet, all departments and the school, and they are compensated. The cost of those parts are going up, and so you see that as an additional revenue. Of course, we see that as an additional expense, too. And there's a, kind of a new category, recycling revenue, that we're kind of excited about in the future. Forgive me for this being so detailed, but there is a capital improvement plan. We do do annually a five-year capital plan. What you see before you and what the council's considering as part of this budget request is obviously next fiscal year, the first year of that five-year plan. And I've just selected a handful of items just to mention. So for instance, under municipal capital projects, there are a number of technology upgrades, there's maintenance to fire stations, the transportation committee recommendations, predominantly those are improvements in the Oak Hill intersection area, a number of road projects, and the library's requested monies to do an expansion of the office area. Capital equipment, there's a programmed replacement for engine three, which is one of the humpers. There's dispatch equipment, essentially to accommodate bringing Old Orchard Beach on board, two plow trucks, and the council's considering a town-wide revaluation as well. And on the school side, there's a number of technology projects, it's not just one, there's a great deal of detail behind that number. There's a lot of different facilities and maintenance-related projects, and there are three buses that are on the schedule for replacement as well. That just gives you a flavor, there are more projects than that, but I've just kind of picked out the larger ones, if you will, for presentation. So what does that all mean? The effect of this budget, as it sits today, calls for a total commitment of over $57 million, which represents a 6.31% increase in monies to be raised through property tax, and that would require an 87 cent increase on the tax rate. Now, for purposes of this calculation, we do assume some modest increase in value, total town value, and we've assumed $15 million increase, and that would essentially reduce that number down to a 5.87% increase on the tax rate. Still quite a bit of work to do, I would say, and we further calculate that down, the effect that would have on the average residential property taxpayer would be about an additional $261 a year in taxes. This chart, again, forgive me, there's a lot of detail here, but I think it can be quite telling. This shows you three critical factors: what's happened to town valuation over the last 10 years, what's happened to the commitment, which is the amount of money needed to be raised through property tax, and what the effect that has on the tax rate. And lastly, just in terms of schedule from here forward, tonight, of course, is the public hearing. On April 30th, there'll be a joint budget workshop. The full town council and the full school board will meet in these chambers to have a joint workshop. By then, certainly the town finance committee will have completed its work, and I suspect the school finance committee will nearly be complete as well. That puts us in position for the council to consider the budget in final, second and final reading on May 7th, and all of that points us toward the scheduled date for the school budget validation referendum vote on May 13. Town hall serves as the polling place on that day, and that day is fixed at this point, so that's kind of the date that's driving this whole schedule, if you will, and the results of the council's action on the 7th will determine what goes to the voters on that day. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's a very quick and brief overview, but I just wanted to kind of set the tone for the public hearing.
Thanks very much. I'll wait. Okay, the schedule for the second reading will be on May 7th, and anybody that will open up the public hearing right now, anyone who would like to speak, name and address. Who's going to be first? Public hearing on the municipal school budget for 2015.
I was here once for tonight. Maybe I should talk about the Texas A&amp;M and Mississippi playing basketball, maybe I should talk about that. Anyway, I'm not going to tell you how old I am, but I was born in 1930, and it happened that I'm sure my mom and dad are talking in the same situation as we hear this tonight. Fortunately for me, my higher education came with the GI Bill, and I appreciate that from all you people who contributed to that. I think that probably, if I went to school, my children were raised in four different states in New England. My job, that was my responsibility, moving around with my job. I find that, I believe in education, and my problem with raising the taxes is the value of my property is greater than it used to be. I have to pay for that value in the property. What I pay for my condo is basically almost double today in 16 years, so therefore my taxes have to be also related to the same way. I hope that the council takes a real good look at this, and hope the audience here understands that you gotta pay for education. I believe the first thing we have to do is make sure we can all read. Number one, read the budget, read the education. Have you ever visited schools? I'm back to with the seniors, I talked to you before, and we are planning to have some of our seniors who want to, to go to a classroom and look inside, and so it really, really happens in there. There's a lot of activity going on. Number one, I'm very concerned about technology. I grew up and worked for Ma Bell, we invented the transistor. I traveled the country in New England talking about this muddy midget, and without that thing, we would have had, I'm sure, radio tube this big, rather than little transistor this big. We have to look at this, we have to be very careful with it, we should really understand this. Go home and say, geez, you know, maybe that's okay, maybe that's okay, but maybe they can knock off a couple of thousand dollars here and there, or not fill a position. I get very upset when you take away languages, I get very concerned about that. I remember a few years ago, we had the students from other schools come in and say, "I can't go to school in Scarborough anymore because you're not teaching Spanish, I gotta go to someplace else." I shouldn't, that should never happen in Scarborough, and I think that probably, take a good look, and I think if the people understand exactly what we're doing with the money, that there should be no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone next? Public hearing on the municipal and school budget.
Hi, my name's Larry Pelletier, live on Horseshoe Drive. I have a couple of questions on the presentation that you just made. The $604,000 extra revenue coming in this year, is that a one-year addition? Is that the total addition of extra money that we're receiving from the state domain?
The format is really not for give and take of information, I'm pleased to meet with you one-on-one, I could show you all that detail if you'd like.
Well, that's just a simple yes or no answer.
There's no guarantees going forward, so I can't guarantee that beyond this year.
No, I understand, I'm just asking, is that, is that extra revenue, $604,000 extra, more than we expected this year?
Or is that, that's what we are expecting this year?
Extra revenue.
Over the current year, yes.
Thank you very much. My question is not about education, my question really has, or not my question, my comment has to do with the budget reality. When I look at CPI, Consumer Price Index, when I take a look at the rate of inflation for the last five years, and compare it with what I see going on in our town, and the way taxes are running, there's no correlation. Most everybody in this room probably has to make adjustments in their own family budget because they're not getting 10% raises, or if they are, I'm happy for them, but there probably aren't too many of us that get 10% a year, and I would implore the council to look at the budgets, to remember that the people who live in town, for the most part, are probably not the recipients of 10-year, I mean 10% increases, and to try to find a way to be, to come in with more realistic budgets, so that this is not a contentious point, but the people can work together. We can't keep raising taxes every year 10%, it's not going to work, and for people to keep submitting budgets that invoke those types of tax increases, doesn't make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else that would like to speak, you know, you can go up and line up at the podium.
My name is Dick Springer, apartment J313, Piper Shores. I was born in 1930 also, and I endorse everything that my fellow 1930 birth person said. I have a question, I don't know whether you have the answer, and that question is, how much are property taxes being, or property taxes, property tax increases being driven by reductions in state aid for schools? I don't know whether you can give an answer, but I certainly put the question out there, because I think it's probably pretty significant.
Thank you. If anybody has questions on the budget, they can contact the town manager anytime. During these public hearings, we just want to hear comments from the general public, and, because it's really not a format to be answering questions back and forth. Town manager's in his office every day, pretty much, to, and can get back to you if you leave a message. Anyone else? Anyone else like to comment on the municipal school budget? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
Order. Order number 1435 is a 7:00 PM public hearing and scheduled a second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 6 of the Animal Control Ordinance.
Okay, anyone from the public like to comment? Please step forward, name and address. This is the night, public hearing. The second reading will be May 7th. Anyone wants? Thought I was speaking loud enough. It's a public hearing, the Animal Control Ordinance. If anyone would like to speak, you can line up right behind the podium, name and address, please.
Elaine Richard, 5 Reef Lane, 208 East Grand Avenue. A counselor has mentioned a couple of times that the ordinance is something that she can live with, even though it's not something that she would like. We might also, we might have something in common, because that counselor and I don't have a dog, and at the end of the day, neither of us have to face the reality of this ordinance. I got involved in the beginning because the process was more than flawed, it was outright unbelievable. I believed that when the council heard the arguments for keeping the ordinance as it was and work on the education enforcement, common sense would rule. I then believed that when the referendum was passed, it was at least a time for the council to be, to reflect and work on a compromise. Then my belief system broke down. So now positions are justified by invoking phrases to put people into factions. First, we have the silent majority. These are people who are not politically vocal, they are not outspoken, they are not active, and we have no idea how they feel about any issue. But this phrase is often used by politicians when the vocal minority disagree with their opinions. You can say, "I represent the silent majority, and I'm sure the silent majority is against it," or "I'm sure the silent majority is for it," you have no idea. Then we have the phrase, "special interest groups," which of course has a negative connotation. In today's vernacular, it means a group who have a lot of money to sway politicians to do their bidding. We have special interest groups on both sides. We have special interest groups that champion some political cause because they truly care. With so much apathy in this country, when a group is willing to give of their time and energy, we should applaud their endeavor and not put them down. We will never know whether the group of people who oppose the ordinance are a special interest group or part of a larger silent majority, but whatever you want to call the group, they deserve respect. Respect that was never accorded after the referendum, respect that was never accorded in the selection of the ad hoc committee. The council speaks of a compromise that you have fieldfully participated in. You compromise with a select committee in which the majority of the members were selected to agree with you. That's not a compromise. A compromise occurs with groups that are not on the same page with one another. If that had happened, we would have seen a settlement with mutual concessions that were agreeable to the parties. That's a true compromise. Then some of us wouldn't necessarily have loved it, but we could have lived with it. There's still time to change the terms of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello, my name is Julie Hannan, Mast Road. I've written to all of you several times, I've written to members of the public several times, to members of the media. This for me is not about dogs, this for me is not about plovers. I think we should protect the plover, I think we should allow dogs to walk on the beach, off-leash, but it's not about that for me. For several years, I taught grade six social studies. In grade six social studies, you learn about the Constitution, and one of the founding features of the Constitution is the separation of the federal government and the state. We all know that. This is what it's about for me. It's about the separation of the federal government and the state rights, and I believe that we are acquiescing. We are giving up our state rights to the federal government. If indeed we should be restricting our dogs on our beaches, then the federal government should be respecting the laws that are guiding them, that are meant to guide them. They haven't done that. I do not believe that our town has received due process. I don't believe that. I don't believe we've seen evidence. It's my understanding that the plover was destroyed. Where is that? Where is the evidence? Where, have you shown this town the evidence that says that there was a plover take? Has the U.S. Fish and Wildlife followed the guidelines and the laws that they should be following? Have they consulted with the people that live on the land before they've changed and influenced laws that affect those people? I don't think they have. This became a real issue for me when we decided to negotiate with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife before we asked them to show us the evidence, to prove to us that we were responsible for this. We weren't given our day, we weren't given the evidence, we weren't given the opportunity to negate that evidence. We did our best as a public. Every time you talk about the dogs, overwhelmingly, the people that are speaking at this podium are people that are questioning the process. I don't believe that they're all, they're all questioning the ordinance, they are questioning the process, they're questioning their rights, and they're questioning whether or not their rights are being violated. I'll tell you something, if I- I'll tell you something, if I was a beachfront owner, I would be in court right now, I would have a lawyer at my side, and I would not allow this to be happening. This is not right, and it is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Liam Summers, Holmes Road. I would like to start by thanking Mr. Benedict, Mrs. Katerina, Mrs. St. Clair for responding to my recent email to the council. While we may not agree, it is encouraging that we can have a discourse at least, and I appreciate that. With regard to this situation with the Animal Control Ordinance, what I was attempting to do in that letter, I will do again this evening, you are close to a resolution on this if you can get past certain hurdles, and those hurdles are to not go with the overly restrictive Fish and Wildlife or Maine Audubon recommendations that are really not founded in any basis of fact about the impact of dogs on the beach. What I encourage you to do is actually read about the, the truth about the plover populations on our beaches, and in Maine in general. They don't mesh with what Audubon would like you to believe them to be by their own data. So if you read their data, you'll see that we had the most productive plover season last year, and I think it was nine or 10 years. So it's not quite the dire straits that Audubon would like us to believe. Nonetheless, I agree with Ms. Hannan and the other speakers here, no one's trying to eradicate plovers on the beaches. This is honestly, I'm as tired of talking about this as you are about hearing me talk about this. I can't imagine that every Wednesday you wake up going, "Great, today's the day I get to hear Liam again." No one wants that, truthfully. It's foolishness that we've gone this far. It really is, it's mind-boggling. I was thinking about it on the drive here, like, am I really gonna get up there and prattle on in my soapbox again? I, I do it because it's, it's foolishness, we have to stop this, we have to stop this. Common sense, rational thought, a little reason, a little reach across the table and say, "Look, you want this, you want this, right in the middle is here. We're not there yet, we're close, we have to get past a few of these hurdles that are preventing us from it." Nobody wants another recall, no one wants another referendum, we're spending money that we don't have, obviously, we're talking about taxes here, and here we are spending money on foolishness. We don't have it to spend, let's stop it. Just settle this thing once and for all, get rid of the things that you know are going to cause contention, put in place what you think are reasonable guidelines, which we would all agree on, and let's move forward for once and for all, so I can stop talking to you about this stuff. And then I can talk to you about taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steph Fernal, Maple Avenue, and I'll try and keep it short, too, I just don't want to, my abs, you know, the absence of speaking to things, the thought's not there anymore. The one plover taken in 30 years, most people in the dog groups, they're animal people, they love animals, they love plovers, love animals, just trying to have a nice, nice accord with the whole situation. I think the, the ordinance has just been kinda going past, back and forth is, you know, getting closer. I think the roaming plover situation, which would be covered, probably with a lot of influence from the Audubon and IFW, I think that's a big situation where probably most people who have dogs, I would not agree, wanna agree with. That's the same IFW who's kinda, was letting houses fall in in Saco until the town council had to jump in and say, "Hey, these houses are falling into the water, we should probably stop this." The IFW and Audubon by themselves had no, no reason to wanna, to stop that or help. The, the winter hours, 11 to 2, is a tough time, only time that's really warm for people to walk in the winter, when that winter is 95% people with dogs, there's no reason anybody in their right mind should be on the beach in January, unless you have a dog and wanna get some exercise. Again, with, as far as imposing the restrictions on private property, especially down at Pine Point, I do fear that if we tell people what they can do with their private land, we're gonna have the same feedback as Kennebunk had. People are gonna post our land, and we push them too far, they're gonna push right back, and we're gonna have a huge issue there. That's something I, as someone who enjoys the beach, I would not wanna be kicked off other people's property after being able to enjoy their private property for so long. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Robin McLaughlin, 29 Vespers Street. I had no intentions of speaking, but Julie got me all fired up. Because I, you know, to be honest with you, I'm fearful 10 years from now, we're not gonna be able to walk on half of our Scarborough beaches, because they'll be protected. I truly think that the US Fish and Wildlife has way too much power. I would like to see the town of Scarborough stand up to the US Fish and Wildlife, because, you know, I question, I look at that dredge and I think, "Did it stop because of plovers?" I mean, did we really stop the dredge when our fishermen, who rely on fishing as a livelihood, were Maine? And did that, did it have anything, I just, it blows my mind. I try not to think it might not be because of the plovers, but I, it bothers me, and I just think that, I'm fearful, I'm fearful for losing our rights, and I really wish you'd stick up to the US Fish and Wildlife. And as far as the ordinance, I can't believe it's been over eight months. I mean, if all this energy was put to something, that was, you know, it would've been nice. But my one comment on the winter hours, to me, it's an example of total intolerance of people's differences. I live at Higgins, I'm there every single day, and for the most part in the winter, I'm the only one on the beach, you might see a handful, and for the few people, and if I see someone that doesn't have a dog, I put my dog on leash, and I just think, "What are you gonna do in January, when I'm down by the river, and my dog is off-leash, and I'm the only one there? I mean, you're gonna really send a policeman off, over to give me a ticket?" You know, and I go back to the, I go back to enforcement. If you had someone sitting at the end of Higgins at 5 o'clock and dubbed a lot of people's deputies just to give people tickets for having their dog off-leash, you'd make a fortune. I mean, I can't tell you what happens during the day, 'cause I don't go there during the day, but we, we're not effective, and I think we can make little changes by really enforcing what we have. I'll give people tickets, but you can't do it now, because you go and try to enforce the ordinance now, and you get, "That person's off a leash, that person's on a leash, you can't tell me what to do, and I've given up." Because I respect the ordinance that we have today. I would never let my dog off of a leash after 5:00. Quite frankly, I think 5:00 is a little too early, 'cause no one obeys the rules. So, please, I, you know, to me, the winter, it's, it's, let's try to respect each other's differences. Higgins is a huge beach, I'll stay away from people. So anyways, that's all I have to say, and I think Julie has a really good point, and I hope you think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lethrip, I live at 30 Robinson Road in Scarborough, and I'd just like to address the, this one part of the ordinance that's changed under 6410C, where it says that from the day after Labor Day to May 14th, that dogs, they can be on the leash, or on the beach, except they need to be on leash from 11 to 2:00. I'm wondering why, because it used to be September 15th where dogs needed to be on leash, or at least not, they needed to not be on the beach from 9:00 to 5:00, up until September 15th, and then they were allowed on the beach after 5:00, but on leash. Those first two weeks of September, to me, are prime times where people like to go to the beach, people come here, retired people come for holidays, people with small children, that's, that Labor Day week is, the weather's still nice, and people wanna be on the beach, and they're used to being on the beaches here without any dogs. And so I'd like to suggest that we change that date back to September 15th, rather than having the shift happen the day after Labor Day, and having these dogs on the beach when there's senior citizens and people with small children on vacation, trying to enjoy the very last warmth of the summer season. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. Peter Hayes from Avon Inn Hill Lane, just kinda like to echo, and I think this is, what's kinda happened here is kind of a microcosm of what's happening across our country, and we look at, all you have to do is look out west at the Bundy situation. There've been a lot of federal agencies that are really trying to flex and, and try to influence things, and if you look at what happened out there, you know, you have the Bureau of, Bureau of Land sending in SWAT helicopters, sniper teams, all over our ranch herding grazing. So I think, you know, let's, you know, you look at Saco, they actually, as a community, pushed back against what was happening there, and they created change. And I think we, as a community, this is important to all of us, we need to have some courage, we have to do what's right for the majority of the citizens here, and not be intimidated by some of these federal agencies that are really trying to, if you look at the IRS with what's happened with the IRS scandal, if you look at the Department of Labor and the Bundy situation I just mentioned, you look at a bunch of these things. It's time that we push back, and as so eloquently said earlier, this is an issue of, there's a role for federal government, there's also a role for local government, which is what we are. And the citizens of Scarborough have spoken, they clearly have said what they'd like to have done with the leash law, so please listen to the citizens here, you are to represent us, so I hope, I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else, 'cause I'm gonna close the hearing. Okay.
Order number 14-36 is a 7:00 PM public hearing and a schedule of second reading on the proposed amendment to Chapter 604A, the Horse Beach Permit Ordinance.
Okay, the schedule for the, for the second reading will be on May 7th, again with this one, and is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the Horse Beach Permit Ordinance? Horses on the beach. Anyone like to speak to that? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
Order number 14-37 is a 7:00 PM public hearing and scheduled a second reading on the proposed amendment to Chapter 610, the Piping Plover Ordinance.
Okay, once again, the second reading will be held on May 7th, and do I have anybody from the public that'd like to speak on the Piping Plover Ordinance? Anyone? It's your opportunity.
Happy to take the soapbox one more time. I'll say very simply, the fact that we even have a plover ordinance, to me, is ridiculous. You know, what are we gonna have next? We gonna have a bluebird one, we gonna have a American eagle ordinance, we gonna have a snowy owl ordinance? I mean, the fact that our town has one, I get why the US Fish and Wildlife protects them, I get why they're taken care of by the US government. What I don't get is why we've put ourselves in a position where we are responsible for protecting the animals, in a way that, we are a vehicle for the US Fish and Wildlife. I struggle so much with this, this balance that we have in our government, the fact that the US government now knows better than the citizens, and in many cases, they don't know better. We are the US government. We are, everybody in this room, we are the US government, we are the state government, we are the local government, we are the council. So we know just as well as someone who is sitting in Washington and is saying, "Oh, let's get the town of Scarborough to protect them, we'll put these things in place." They're holding us hostage, folks, they're doing it with education, education is a state right, I'm an educator. We are, first, we put an idea, it's not that I don't, I disagree with what they're asking us to do. What I disagree with is that they are holding our funds hostage, they are holding our contracts hostage. That's what they're doing. That's what we are doing to ourselves, because we are allowing it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Hannan, Mast Road.
I'm Ellie Springer, I live at 15 Piper Road. What I don't get is why it's okay to disobey regulations. These are federal regulations, they're there for a reason, I believe, a very good reason, and why it's okay for us to disregard them, and it's okay for other people to do, to follow the law, but we don't have to. That's what I don't get. So I, I believe in our government, I believe in following its regulations, and I don't see how we can justify all this stuff that's going on here. It seems so muddy to me, all this, but the, the bottom line for me is, this is the law, I brought my kids up to respect the law, and I would hope that we would do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Liam Summers, Holmes Road, I wasn't going to speak again, but I, but we don't usually get this many people here at these meetings, so this is less about addressing you and more about addressing the town. I just, I don't know that people are-
Excuse me? You have to address your comments.
I will, I will.
Sound not the-
Just, just understanding why I'm coming up again, 'cause I wasn't planning on. I just, maybe, I'll address this to the guest-
Yeah, please.
-as, as regard to piping plovers. The facts remain, indisputable facts remain, that in our, on our beaches, on the beaches that we're talking about, there in 2012 were exactly six birds, six birds. The amount of money that this town is now going to spend to protect those six birds, we would be able to buy the computers for the kids in schools. So I just am curious why it is, when piping plovers don't even select our beaches as primary nesting habitat in Maine, the beaches in Kennebunk are their primary nesting habitat. The beaches in southern Maine are beaches, they don't even care to nest here typically. They're six, six birds, six, is what we're talking about. So if we spend money on a piping plover coordinator, if we spend all the money on the literature and the new website to let people know when they can and can't be on the beach, and put in place new tagging programs, and we hire another animal control officer to get down there and write some tickets, what we're talking about is probably, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, to get all of this done, every single year, for six birds. So each one of those birds is going to have an annuity of about forty grand at the end of the day, right? I have a son in school, there's no ordinance to protect his rights in school, give him the forty grand, you know? I would, I, we just have to have some common sense here. Someone has to take a step back and say, "What are we talking about?" This is, there's not a wholesale slaughter of birds on the beaches every year. You know, this is, one plover was assumedly killed by a dog in the last 10 years, a single plover. Do you know that the Banding Project that Maine Audubon did on the plovers in 2010 killed 126 of them? But one plover is a catastrophe, that the town now has to pick up a tab of 200, 300, 400 thousand dollars to protect these six birds? This is insanity. Stop. Think what you're doing. The money doesn't need to be spent on the plovers, the ordinance doesn't need to be radically altered to protect plovers. Plovers are just fine on these beaches before, and they're just gonna be just fine on the beaches after, they don't care what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Suzanne Foley Ferguson, 331 Blackpoint Road. The Endangered Species Law was created in the 1970s, and it is not a law that protects every single endangered species. What it does is, it requires that the agencies of the government set, create recovery plans for every species, and it requires that, as part of those recovery plans, they set guidelines. They're not laws, as someone previously said, these are not laws, these are guidelines. We had Mark McCullough from the US Fish and Wildlife Service come up here and tell us it is not the law. So we are not breaking the law. The breaking of the law comes from when you take an individual of a species, but wind projects take endangered species, development takes endangered species, shoreline protection of golf courses takes a species, all kinds of things take a species, and that is against the law. As Mr. Summers has explained, there has been no data, except for one in 30 years, about dogs taking a plover, and even that, we don't have yet. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear, that the Endangered Species Law is not the law that creates, that requires leashes on dogs or dogs to- is not the law that creates- that requires leashes on dogs or dogs to be removed from leashes at all. The intention of the Endangered Species Act was to protect the entire species, not the individual, and it's gone- because it was created in the seventies and things have changed so much, um, the intent, it really needs to be overhauled, frankly, and we see that all over the country. So, um, I think with good intent, the town has put this plover protection ordinance in effect, and I think the two hundred foot, uh, distance is a good improvement. I think that's good, that the town is willing to take those steps to do it. But I also do agree that we are doing- we are already going above and beyond, and we spent five million dollars on protecting conservation land, and that's also going above and beyond every single town in this state. We have spent more money on conservation, protecting the marshes, protecting wildlife habitat, than any other community in the state, our tax dollars. And I think the U.S. Fish should pay attention to that as well, because that's part of the whole protection packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'm Dick Springer. I live at Piper Shores, apartment J three thirteen, in back. It seems to me that there have been some seriously over-the-top attacks on the federal government as infringing on our supposed constitutional rights. Now, what localities do and what states do affect people outside the state frequently? And, uh, for example, uh, do the people in Ohio have the right to burn as much coal as they want to generate their power when it, uh, kills trees in upstate New York and Maine? I don't think so. And who's going to regulate that kind of thing? And the assertion that it's our right and we don't have to follow guidelines by the EPA and other federal agencies, uh, it seems to me is, in the law run, really destructive of what we all have to do. I- I mean, there has to be cooperation among communities and among states, and the federal government has to regulate things. And somebody mentioned the Bundy situation in Nevada. That guy owes the federal government a million dollars, and he got a bunch of armed goons to keep the feds from collecting it, and I don't see how that's in any way relevant to the issues we were talking about here.
Thank you.
Pamela Rovner, Fourteenth Street, Pine Point. First of all, happy Easter to everyone. Secondly, when you talk about following the law, each of the councillors that are sitting here tonight are sitting here because they received the most votes from the citizens. We received the most votes from the citizens in the dogs group, and yet here we are, still fighting for what we won, and that's being completely ignored. Nobody cares about the fact that when you have a vote, whoever gets the most votes wins, but that seems to be lost when it comes to the dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the piping plover ordinance? Anyone? Okay, closing the public in.
Order number fourteen dash forty is a seven P M. public hearing in action on the new request for a massage therapist license from Nancy Whitehouse, working at U.S. Health Works, located at fifty-five Supreme Street.
Okay, open the public hearing on the license for a massage therapist. Anyone like to comment? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Anyone? No.
Um, just say welcome to Scarborough.
Okay.
Thanks for opening a business.
Thank you.
Filling order.
Okay, seeing, uh, no one has any further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution fourteen dash oh five is act on the request to proclaim the week of April thirteenth as National Library Week in Scarborough.
Um, Kate, were you going to read that?
Yes, ready?
Please do so.
Be it resolved by the council of the town of Scarborough, Maine, in town council assembled that and whereas libraries' health lives change in their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls, and whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues, and whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebooks, and whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents, students, and businesses with classes, service, and workshops, and whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council, in town council assembled as follows, that the Scarborough Town Council proclaims Library Week in Scarborough, April thirteenth to nineteenth, twenty fourteen, and further encourages all residents to visit the public or school library this week, take advantage of the wonderful library resources available.
Thank you, Councilor Sinclair. Um, do I have a motion?
A move.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, council?
Oh, it's got a great library, and, uh, I think it should be applauded. And, uh, I enjoy it practically every day.
I'd just say that knowing, um, the library as I do, uh, I would guess that that week they're going to have a lot of things going on, so I'm sure they'll publicize that. Um, it's a great opportunity to introduce your kids if you haven't taken them. Um, so many resources there, so, thanks.
Thank you. That being said, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none.
And a new business, and, uh, number, uh, order number fourteen forty-one is act to set the date, time, and location of the school budget valid- validation referendum for Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Holeswood open up at seven A.M. and close at eight P.M., and it's going to be located right here at Town Hall.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? Anybody?
I would just say, um, to remind folks at home, it's always significantly important that you vote, and, um, certainly typically, we've always had that secondary question, you know, too high, too low. So again, um, the importance of filling out that second little bubble in your ballot, um, it certainly helps us have a better sense of direction. So, again, don't forget to vote.
Thank you for that. Councilor Katerina.
Um, I would direct this question to the town clerk. There's absentee voting will be available, I assume, prior to this?
Yes.
And when would that start?
It actually starts a week before, it would be April thirtieth.
So people, if you can't make it, uh, on the thirteenth, you can get a ballot beforehand and vote, so, just a reminder of that.
Okay, non-action items. Oh, sorry. All those in favor? Did you- I'm sorry, Jim. I looked that way once. Did you have- go ahead.
Yes, I did. With the, uh, disapproval of an awful lot of people, at this point, I don't see the need for Tuesday, May thirteenth. That's less than a month from now. And as we've indicated, we're not even close on what- what the, uh, budget is going to do. And I don't believe, especially after hearing the school committee, uh, school budgets, whatever, isn't meeting till the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of this month, it's putting an awful short window into doing an awful lot of work.
Right, well, that's state law. We're following the state law, and, we've been- I've been in contact with our representatives on that issue of the way the budget, you know, with their decisions, with our decisions, and the windows that they allow to be looked at, to be changed. So, we'll see how that goes. Am I correct in that's state law, right?
Yes.
Well, there's a number of state laws that are relevant, perhaps more to Councilor Benedict's point, uh, the reason we scheduled it so early, you might say, you might ask, early May, is to allow enough time on the back end should there need to be multiple additional votes, and in fact, last year, three validation votes were required. Uh, it is, uh, requirement by charter and state law to approve a budget by the end of June, so it's really a function of that calendar and leaving enough time on the back end should there need- be a need to go back to the voters.
Okay. Council Blaise?
Um, Tody, did you say that absentee ballots would be available on April thirtieth?
Yes. Well, I have to have them- I have to have them available seven days prior to the final vote taken, which would be May seventh.
We don't have a budget by then.
That's correct. And what happens is people are issued the ballot, however, they cannot return it back to me until after the budget's passed.
Okay.
Another quirk of the state law in the town.
Yeah, that's a good answer though. That explains it. Councilor Sinclair?
Uh, no, I don't- I had one question. I don't know if Tom's going to be able to answer this, or if somebody would be willing to answer it from the school. Um, that six-line item that talks about, it's substantial, obviously, and it makes sense, um, salaries, contracts. I'm assuming that's fixed. Those are negotiated contracts that are, I would assume that carry on further than this? I mean, there's no wiggle room there at all?
I personally don't have enough knowledge of what's concluded in their so-called basic expenditures, but I- I suspect the vast majority of, uh, the items in that category, in fact, contractually obligated, uh, you might say that they're- they are fixed.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, back this way? All right, I got everybody this time. All right, good. All those in favor? Against? All right, the vote. Non-action items. Okay. Standing and special committee reports. Uh, we'll start with Councilor Sinclair.
I am- oh, we had ordinance meeting today, which was actually really productive, um, rather interesting.
Hmm.
Um, we are going over, um, I know there's some concern down at Pine Point with their parking. We're working on that. Um, we've gotten a couple emails about that. We're also talking, uh, about medical marijuana and how we write ordinances for that, um, and-
The one item we did move on was the change to the local public tax rebate program.
Right, so we did pass that along, which was excellent. Um, and you can- those are televised, so you can actually go back and watch those if you have questions, and then feel free to ask any of us any questions about those. Um, and I think that's it. The li- obviously, the Library Week, um, is big, and that's it for me.
Council Blaise?
Um, yesterday we had a senior advisory board meeting, uh, primarily the work, uh, that was done at the meeting was all organizational and planning work for the, uh, upcoming Senior Expo. And, uh, as Tom mentioned before in his report, the, uh, Finance Committee has been meeting on a weekly basis discussing individual department budgets, and that will be continuing.
Councilor Benedict?
Um, the only committee that I'm on that had a meeting was, I believe, Scarborough Shellfish. Um, all the licenses were renewed, um, no crabbing from May first to June fifteenth, and the rest of it was just miscellaneous and a housekeeping, but it was a profitable meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Katerina?
Uh, yes, uh, long-range planning, met on April fourth, and we discussed some, uh, potential changes down the line to some zoning in Pine Point and Higgins Beach, so people don't have to go through the zoning board of appeals every time they want to do anything to their house. Also some rezoning, um, next to my house, actually, on Gorham Road. Um, we met with the neighbors, uh, the abutters to the Gorham Road redistricting proposal on April ninth, about fifteen people turned out, which is a good turnout. And our next meeting is Friday, May second. We meet bright and early, Friday mornings at eight A.M., and I'm like, oh boy. But anyway, that's when we meet. Also Conservation Commission met this week, um, we're looking at sea level rise projects, uh, the Leighton Farms development, a report, follow-up report on, uh, from the Planning Board, and a discussion of the Benjamin Farm, uh, project that's, um, under contract right now, and the, uh, Commission will be sending a letter to us on the town council asking for our support. And that's it for me.
Councilor Donovan?
The Finance Committee met, as we have, uh, every week for the month of April, uh, and had a very good exchange this week with the, uh, School Board members, Finance Committee, and, uh, the Superintendent. Uh, I think we're getting to better understand what is going on with their budget, and it's going to be a lot of work for us to reach this, but we'll spend the better part of the rest of the month and into May doing an analysis to try to fully understand exactly what we have.
Thank you. Councilor Holbrook?
Um, Housing Alliance will be meeting tomorrow, April seventh, at six thirty. Um, they will be having a goal setting as well as, um, an election for chair for that committee. Um, like my fellow councilors mentioned, um, Finance Committee met on Tuesday, April fifteenth. We had a presentation from the Superintendent as well as the, um, Board of Education Chair and the Chair of their Finance Committee. Um, they did give us a current state of the school budget, if you will, um, so that's still a work in progress and- and things to come. Um, we also met with MIS, um, which is our technology department. Um, they do have a few CIP projects that will be coming forward in request. Um, most of this has to revolve around end-of-life. Um, we have some equipment and some hardware, and we can no longer get parts and pieces, and it's starting to break down. So some of that is, um, end-of-life replacements, as well as, um, an emergency backup system was also within that CIP request. Um, this would allow for, in the event of an emergency, if things went down, we would still have a means to retrieve information like who's paid what taxes, what payroll needs to go, all those backup data things. Um, as well in their request, they did have a joint shared position with the school, um, and then we also had Community Services. Um, their overall bottom line was almost flat, that there are changes within that budget, but from one department to the other department, and by the time you get to the bottom line overall, they were relatively flat. Um, they do have a shared position, um, within that budget with Public Works, that's for a part-time person to handle some beach issues, for Community Service in the summer, and then for Public Works, that would address overtime and plow routes and problems they're having, being able to maintain some of the roads. So again, that would be a joint position between the two departments. Um, the other few suggestions that they had is they are suggesting, um, as was one of our councillor's goals, they looked at some of their user fees. Um, Community Services has reached pretty much an all-time high at being self-funding, um, but in order to maintain that, they're at the eighty, I think it was eighty-six percent threshold, um, which is the highest they've ever been. Um, they will need to adjust a few fees in order to kind of keep on track with that. Mostly it revolves around, again, these are all user-based systems, so childcare services, beach permits, things like that. The folks that use those services therefore pay for it, rather than asking for us for, um, an increase to their budget. Um, the next meeting for Finance Committee will be April twenty-second at nine A.M. Um, that time we will have, um, the last two pieces for- for us on the municipal side. That'll be administration and also outside agency requests, and then we will be going through, um- And then we will be going through, um, each department and making suggestions for the manager to collect and submit as our collective recommendation to the second reading for council on the municipal side. Um, we do have a joint workshop with the, um, council and school board. That is April 30th, if I'm not mistaken. I wrote it down somewhere. Um, and that'll be at 7:00 PM. Um, appointments met this evening. Um, they do have, um, a name to post, will be Michael Bunting for the Housing Alliance. And, that's it.
Okay, um, I have nothing to report on committees. Um, so, we'll go right to the, uh, town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple quick words. Um, we've assisted the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers as they're looking to wrap up the dredge project. As I've reported in the past, the project is not done, but they do need to kind of clean things up, uh, to get through the summer season. The contractor has, has removed his equipment from the site, though there's still some work to do to kind of shape some of the, the dredge spoils that were deposited on Western Beach. And so, they're looking to source some local contractors to assist with that effort. So, we've helped there, and we'll, I'll certainly continue to work with them and track, um, the project with all intent to get them back here next fall when the next opportunity presents itself. Uh, another matter I'd just like to mention in passing, and, uh, it's gonna come back through the committee process and ultimately to you, I suspect, but for a number of years, we've been dealing with complaints from residents regarding train whistles and disturbances associated with that. There's two, two crossings in particular that we've received a number of complaints on, and staff has actually spent a little time understanding how the federal quiet zone rules work. Um, the town of Freeport, uh, is right now completing a similar process. I believe they have ten different crossings in Freeport that they, uh, that, uh, trains no longer whistle at. Um, we're gonna send this through the Transportation Committee, who I think is ideally suited to take these matters up. Uh, the two areas are at Winnet's Neck, Winnet's Neck Road. Uh, it's at the point where the crossing is, there's only a few properties, but there's certainly a lot of folks that live within earshot of that intersection. And then a private crossing called the Nelson Crossing, it's off Highland Avenue, and it would access what formerly was Dragon Cement, had a plant, if you will, on the other side of the tracks. Uh, the train whistles consistently at that location, though there's no traffic. I, I think this will be a, a good thing. It's not an easy effort by any stretch, but I'm sure the, uh, Transportation Committee will be interested in taking it up, and I hope to advance it quickly. Also, a couple of quick, uh, just little mentions, there's a Free Electronics Recycling Day. This is a project jointly sponsored by Time Warner Cable and USM, and it's at the Portland Woodbury Campus on April 12th, nine to one. And I, I mentioned that just because I participated in one just a year ago, and I assure you, if you look around your house and in your closet and your basement, we all have old, dead electronic equipment, and please take the time, it's a free event, uh, to dispose of those products properly. Again, it's April 12th, nine to one.
Oh, that was just bad.
I beg your pardon, I'll get back, I think I missed, I put that date down wrong. I beg your pardon. Um, well, if there's one in the future, I encourage you to...
(laughing).
Just as a footnote, I was amazed, I filled my car twice.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll be amazed how much stuff you have hidden in your house.
Yeah.
And, uh, finally, just for the council's benefit, um, the annual Scarborough Community Chamber Municipal Officials Dinner, Appreciation Dinner, is May 20th. That's a Tuesday evening, and this year will be at Piper Shores. They are looking for you to respond if you can make it, and if you didn't get the invitation, I can certainly provide one to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, Counselor Comments. I'll start with, uh, Counsel Sinclair.
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Blaze?
Well, I'd just like to thank, uh, everybody that stood up and talked about the budget, uh, whether you thought it was too high or too low. Important thing is you stood up and you talked about it. Um, I specifically wanna thank the person that did stand up and talk about the CPI, because that is, it's really a key for a lot of people in this town. We are the oldest town in the state, and the state is the oldest town in the nation. We have a lot of retired people. And when the taxes go up, the past four years, the taxes went up twenty-one percent, and this budget is proposing it to go for the last five years, pretty close to thirty percent. If you take a look at the CPI, the CPI's only gone up about eight, maybe nine percent. And people, the CPI is more, uh, a measure of people that are working and making an income. Uh, retired people, maybe they have retirements and they have social security, but they don't get increases very often. Uh, so, increases like this to their taxes is, is an indication that people are being driven out of town. Um, and we've gotta do something to prevent that from happening. We can't have people leaving this town just because the taxes are going too high. Thank you.
Counsel Benedict?
Oh, I just echo what Counsel Blaze said. To give you an honest-to-good idea, my social security increase this year was thirty-five dollars. That doesn't come close to my taxes going up two-hundred-and-sixty. And it can only go on so long, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in the boat. So, we have some more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Katerina?
Yes. Um, first, I'd like to talk a little bit about the school, the school budget. Um, I support the best schools that Scarborough can afford, and I want people to be very clear about that. Uh, the original intent of the property tax we, we, back when, was to fund, uh, free public education. Uh, and so, as such, it deserves attention, uh, to ensure the success of our students, 'cause after all, they are our future. Uh, however, in this time of the major cost shifts that have occurred, uh, from the state onto municipalities and schools, uh, we have a large number of unfunded Band-Aids, for example, that have come down, uh, that I'm hoping that the school department, I asked them at the finance meeting, to see if they can tease out a percentage, so I can get a better idea of how much of that is unfunded that we're looking at. But, uh, we really need to examine, uh, any portions of the budget that don't contribute directly, uh, to the success of students in the classroom, in my opinion. And I certainly encourage the school board, as the, uh, elected leaders of the school department, to ascertain how best we can invest in our children while balancing the strain that's been put upon some of our citizens by the increased property tax. 'Cause I can assure you, having had two political campaigns in the last two years, I've knocked on many, many, many doors of people who are struggling to pay their property taxes, so we do have to keep that in mind. And, uh, I'm very hopeful that we're gonna have some changes in Augusta next year, uh, and see an end to irresponsible tax shifts, so...
Thank you. Counsel Donovan?
Well, um, I guess a week ago last Saturday, being my first year, I had the opportunity to spend, uh, about four hours, uh, at the, uh, school district's workshop, uh, and I just wanted to give people my impressions of that. Uh, it represented, and, and Counselors Blaze and Katerina both joined me in attending this four-hour session, and it was intense. Uh, I think the impressions I came away with are that we have very dedicated, very professional, uh, very competent people running our schools. Uh, we are in a very difficult time, having one of the worst financial crises of, of the last hundred years. But I don't think that that circumstance should lead to acrimony or diminish our appreciation for what the people who run our schools and our teachers and the quality of education that is being delivered in our community. Uh, this will be a difficult time from a budget point of view, because we need to exercise restraint. There's just no question. But in the end, I think people should realize that the school department and the Board of Education is doing a very good job. Their job is to try to present the best educational, uh, situation for our students, and they're doing that. We are going to have a, a debate over the next month about financial restraint and budgets, and what can we afford? And I am applauding the schools, but also recognizing the reality that we need to exercise restraint. And so, I'm, with a little trepidation, gonna move forward for the next few weeks while we try and, uh, do the best job we can for the community.
Thank you. Counsel Holbrook?
Sorry, I didn't attend the workshop, 'cause I was working, so, um, I had to pay my tax bill.
(laughing).
Um, but, but certainly, you know, I, I hear good things. I, I hear it was very informative, you know, it was definitely a lot of, a lot of information. Um, so, thank you to the counselors that were able to make it. Um, you know, I, I go back to, I guess I, I'm gonna say, is, you know, I certainly care about the education of the children in this town. Um, and I have kids in there too, so, you know, and I've said that repeatedly, I, I do care about the, you know, education that they're provided. But I also, am also very cognizant of the times that we're in. Um, you know, I come from a long line of folks in town, you, you know, I'm, I'm fifth generation. There's a lot of fingers, there's a lot of roots. There's a lot of people that are neighbors that are, neighbors that have been neighbors for generations, there are neighbors that are a third cousin, a fourth cousin. I know this one's been laid off. I know this one's had a pay freeze for five years. I know social security's not giving them any money. I know we've had the worst winter in oil prices in history, and it's two, three thousand dollars more to, to heat your home. Um, you know, I, I'm well aware and cognizant of, and I'm gonna say this again, I know this is a small thing for some, but it's detrimental to others, is the circuit breaker. You know, we're asking our residents, you know, the state has eliminated it. At best, we might be able to do something on the town side. We're already asking the seniors that got that, you've lost fifteen hundred. I know you can't afford the medications you have. I know you're cutting pills. I know you're cutting corners. I know you're turning your heat down to sixty-two, and you're hanging on with your dear life on a reverse mortgage. Give me, come up with fifteen hundred dollars to pay that tax bill. That's what I go into this looking with. I appreciate education is important. I appreciate that there are needs on the municipal side. We're not gonna get all the needs on the municipal side, and what I'm hoping and asking for the school board to do is, I will do as best I can as finance chair on the municipal side of the budget, which is where we control the money. What I am asking for the school board to do is tell me, what do you absolutely need? I know you have improvements, I know you have goals for your future. What I'm saying is the now. We have to help these people in the now. It's not something to let go, it's not something to walk away from, but tell me what you absolutely just bare minimum need this year, and then we'll work on cycling that later. Um, so, there's my big deal on budget. And, um, something happy, happy Easter on Sunday, and hopefully you catch sight of the bunny, leaving little goodies behind. I have just one last thing, too, um, clink bags. We have a couple clink bags for the Town Fuel Assistance Program, as you know, as I just said, um, heating was brutal this year. Um, we are partnered with Project Grace. There are some clink bags over there, which all goes into the Town Fuel Heating Assistance Program. We still have clink bags at the clerk's office. I promise you, we will never run out. Collette is on that, I wanna thank her from the bottom of my heart. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is we are currently up to two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven bottles returned. I wish I could say that was dollars, but that's bottles. Um, I don't know how that equates to, hopefully there's a lot of fifteen centers in there. Uh, I do wanna mention as well, just on the clink thing, um, I, I had, I was approached, I took some bottles back for an elderly neighbor of mine that wasn't able to, you know, do that herself. So, um, I thought I would put that out there, that if you do have maybe some returnables that you'd be happy to donate to the Town Fuel Assistance Program, please email me at my town email account, I would be happy to come down and get those for you. Um, so, you can email me, call me on, my, my house phone is the number on the website, it's 883-4138. Leave me a message, I will come collect them for you if, um, you would be kind enough to donate them and aren't able-bodied enough to. Oh, I lied.
Okay.
I lied, there's one more thing. I just wanted, 'cause Tom didn't mention it, um, if you all received the email, which is a really exciting, awesome concept, SAGCO has put together an all-committee meeting. Um, I, I think that's an absolutely wonderful initiative. They're looking at bringing in member from each committee within the town that we have, um, you know, um, respectively, probably the chairs of each of those committees. But to bring them all in to one room to have a discussion about, you know, how do we all work together? A lot of times, projects and initiatives that you're trying to work on in one committee have ties to something else, and, you know, that sort of thing. So, again, this is a great initiative, initiative. I really applaud Karen for putting that together. Um, and I hope that we can have a good showing and a good turnout, and maybe have this as an annual, annual thing. So, um, now and done, I promise.
Okay, thank you. Um, also Saturday, I was unable to attend, um, due, 'cause I had to watch the children, 'cause my wife had to work to pay the taxes.
(laughing).
So, I was, uh, childcare Saturday.
Oh.
Um, I wanted to make it known, especially with the budget, with, there's not gonna be any dog parks.
No.
So, I keep hearing that brought up, there's no dog parks coming any time soon. I am, um, working on preparing, uh, drafting, and I'm still working on it, uh, to offer amendments to the, uh, animal control ordinance. Um, I'm not gonna elaborate on them tonight, because I haven't, uh, finished, and I'll continue that and offer them on May 7th meeting. Um, and they'll be voted on at that time. They're a opportunity to try to, um, come to a consensus on this, um, issue in town, um, to try to compromise on it as best we can, and, uh, try to move on and get the town back on the right track, to, uh, back to peace and harmony again, for the time being. Um, and so, I'll have to stay tuned till May 7th, when I offer those. Um, other than that, I have...
Richard? Are those, are those amendments gonna be available to the public prior to the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, they will. They will. I, as soon as I finish them, um, it's, it's a lot of work, a lot of wording, a lot of wordsmithing, um, I, you know, um, and we'll see how it goes that night of the vote, um, when we vote on it. And, um, I think with that, I'm gonna wrap up my voices. I've had a, had a cold and had enough talking for tonight. So, I'll end it there. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
Don't move, second.
All those in favor?